First time on the agenda is roll call.
Todd, here, West.
Here.
Hedley.
Here.
Scully.
Here.
Arnold.
Here.
Shaker.
Here.
Next item is invocation by Pastor David Hackett from St. United Methodist Church, followed by pledge witness for the Alderman.
Mayor, Alderman, they usually bring you something and today is the anniversary of the Chicago Fire, but I didn't think that was really as important as what poured out across the TV last night unless you watched the sports, you wouldn't know about it. If you're a Chiefs fan, you would. This is to you once before. I just miss it to you again because you're leaders in that community. The lack of civility goes over to sporting events and players rail against crowds who boo injured people. And if there was ever a time in the midst of a political arena like the one that we're in, a tender cake almost in America, our civic leaders, our chamber leaders, our city leaders, our church leaders, our school leaders, we need to practice civility. You know, there are things that test us. And sometimes it feels so good to get a zinger in. And it just never, it's never the right thing to do. I just, I just appeal to you because you represent us and that in all that you do, every opportunity you have to be kind, please do it. Gracious God, we give you thanks. For these who've been elected, who've been called to lead and to serve, we pray, Father, you'd bless them and their endeavors. The work that they're called to is difficult work. There's never enough money. There's never a sense of total agreement. And so we find ourselves in the midst of seeking compromise. And compromise sometimes is difficult for us. So help us to be wise beyond our own intelligence. Help us to be kind of beyond our own ability. Help us to see far beyond today into a future that's preferred. We pray that the deliberations of this evening would be a blessing to our community. The taxpayers, not just the taxpayer, but those who live and reside and who will one day aspire to be part of this community will benefit from the decisions that are made this evening. We pray a special blessing upon each of these. And we pray, Father, that you'd guide their words, guide their actions, guide their deeds. And above all else, you'd be glorified in all that we say and do. In the name of Christ, we pray.
Amen.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of the agenda. Next up is presentations, loss control compliance recognition.
This evening, we have Kevin Power with Midwest Public Risk and he has a presentation for the city board.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, thank you. Not long ago, this board made what I believe to be a wise decision and the way he uses taxpayer funds, saved quite a bit of money. Getting out of the commercial insurance world and moving into pool funding. Instead of buying commercial insurance, you moved into a world, an arena where you pooled with about 150 other public sector entities and for property liability or comp coverage. And in fact, just this last month, Jamie Rensmeyer was elected to our Board of Directors. So we're a not-for-profit organization run by members such as yourselves. Participating in our programs, we put best practices out there that you all have agreed to participate in and have done so well in this past program year. In fact, that we're giving you money back. That doesn't always happen, especially in a tough economy. The actual check has arrived. So at the risk of looking a bit over the top, we did bring a check for $2,502.88 and we wanted to present that to you here today.
Is that good, Bishop?
I've tried.
Yes. But we do want to thank you all for your commitment, for management, for their dedication and for staff for all their hard work. This is not an easy program to do, to put in best practices, but we do appreciate all the hard work.
While the photo op's occurring, I would like to thank staff for taking the time to attend all of the required training and desired training that's been in place in order to qualify for the loss control program. In addition, I want to go out and also thank all of the individuals from our safety program, thus led by our member representative, Jamie Rensmeyer, our state clerk and community resource director. They've done an outstanding job in the last year of outlining what this program is, what the importance of it is. And lastly, most importantly, I want to thank this entire board coming from an entity that had the same risk pool, understanding the importance of how necessary it is to have support of the program from the top down. And you as our elected body have loved that and understanding the importance of it. For that, we thank you.
It does take quite a bit of staff time and commitment. Jamie's work in this is just beginning, so we're adding some extra duties to her. She'll get some sleepless nights. So whatever we need from her, she may be asking some extra time of you. We know you'll give that to her. So we appreciate her leadership on our Board of Directors. And I know she's got a good mentor in Alexis. She was a chairman of our board at one time as well. So we appreciate your commitment to us and we hope that over the years, as we continue with you, our partnership with you, that you'll continue with us as well. Our pool just gave back over three million in dividends in our last meeting as well. Two members that have been in the pool in previous years. So the best practices do work. So your commitment will continue to pay off beyond just this recognition program. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is a proclamation for National Epilepsy Awareness Month. And I have some individuals here like to come forward to receive that.
City of Green Valley, Missouri proclamation, whereas epilepsy is a neurological condition characterized by recurrent unprovoked seizures affecting 3 million people across the United States, including many children and adults in the state of Missouri diagnosed with recurrent seizures. And whereas epilepsy is the third most common neurological disorder among adults in the United States, only behind Alzheimer's disease and stroke. And whereas 10% of the American population will experience a seizure in their lifetime and 3% will develop epilepsy by the age of 75. People with epilepsy have an increased risk of death and it is estimated that up to 50,000 deaths occur annually in the United States from status epileptic, sudden unexplained death in epilepsy and other seizure-related causes, including injuries. Whereas people with epilepsy continue to face social stigmatization and discrimination. Whereas while epilepsy currently has no cure, many of those diagnosed with this disease use modern medicine and surgical techniques to control their seizures. And whereas National Epilepsy Awareness Month is designed to increase the awareness of and encourage more Americans to understand the effects of epilepsy. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, City of Green Valley Board of Aldermen, and I, Mayor Mike Todd, to hereby proclaim the month of November 2012 as National Epilepsy Awareness Month in the City of Green Valley and call upon the citizens of Green Valley to observe the month with appropriate programs and activities. Furthermore, I encourage the citizens of Green Valley to seek information from those organizations with expertise in matters concerning epilepsy. A witness whereof I've set my hand to cause a seal of the city to be affixed just eighth day of October 2012 in the City of Green Valley, Missouri. Mike Todd, Mayor.
And did you want to share with everyone here a little bit about what's all going on that way everyone's aware?
Okay.
Yeah, either way.
Thank you very much. And we lost our daughter last year in September of 2011. She was an eighth grader at South Middle School and had epilepsy her entire life. This is just an important part. We started a foundation called the Purple Peace Foundation and are trying to make our presence known in the community. And we appreciate the support of the community to raise awareness and educate and be able to do fundraising and provide support for families that are affected by epilepsy.
Okay, next on my agenda is police officer oath of office.
Yeah, at this point, I'd like to turn this over to Police Chief Aaron Ambrose to do some introductions.
Sure.
First up, we are going to have Mr. Jeremy Logan. Real quick, you know, we just, we had Nick Logan. I've been in the city for a few years now and I never thought I'd actually see the day, first off, that I'd hire Nick Logan. We just, we recently lost Nick. He went to Independence. So, you know, he didn't do himself any favors. But we are very, very happy to have Jeremy join the team here. And, you know, again, another Green Valley born and raised person. It's pretty special. So congratulations to you. And we got a new oath of office, actually, Jamie Rensmeyer.
Pictures are important at this moment.
That's right.
You'll raise your right hand, please. Just repeat after me. I, Jeremy Logan.
I, Jeremy Logan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the law of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
That I will observe the provisions.
That I will observe the provisions.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Green Valley.
Of the City of Green Valley.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
All of my duties.
All of my duties.
As a member of the Green Valley, Missouri Police Department.
As a member of the Missouri, Green Valley, Missouri Police Department.
It was a long one, sorry. So help me God.
Go ahead and help God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And next up, we have Mr. Jason Worges. Good job, Jeremy. Congratulations. Mr. Worges is coming from Bates City. We picked him up from Bates City. So he is not fresh out of the academy as Mr. Logan is. So he comes to us with some experience and we're very excited to have him on the team. And actually, he started work at six o'clock tonight. So we got to get this going. And then he'll be working the night on his, first night on his break in with Officer Stephen Tracy. So hey, welcome aboard.
Hey, ready?
Ready.
Raise your right hand, please. I, Jason Worges.
I, Jason Worges.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
That I will observe the provisions.
That I will observe the provisions.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the Green Valley, Missouri Police Department.
Of the Green Valley, Missouri Police Department.
And the City of Green Valley.
And the City of Green Valley.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
All of my duties.
All of my duties.
As a member of the Green Valley, Missouri Police Department.
As a member of the Green Valley, Missouri Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's part of the word.
No, they took someone during the end a couple times.
Okay, next on my agenda is citizen participation. We ask citizens to come forth to the podium of microphone and state your name and address, please, for the record. Do you have any citizens who wish to address the board, Steve?
Mine's a good one. Besides, I'd like to thank all of you guys. Everyone has been so helpful when I need something or there's a problem. And I just wanted that on a positive note. At 40 Highway Project is awesome. At Stein Valley Boulevard. That is awesome. Best thing this city's ever done. MoD, whoever did it. It was great, whoever signed that. And mine. Okay, I'm not going to give it to you.
That was MoD.
Well, I was going to give it to you, but.
He kept pushing MoD, so it wasn't just MoD on the road.
Well, I understand you have to push them. They don't just, okay. But, you know, I just wanted to say positive things. You know, everybody always says the negative and there's a positive in there somewhere. And I just wanted to tell you all that. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rose Cook and my address is 805 North West Blosson Court. And I'd like to address the mayor, the city Alderman, and the city administrator, and the other city employees here tonight. I'm here this evening to thank the City of Green Valley for the support and trust they have put into technology solutions over the past 10 years. It was my pleasure to serve your city and to see your city grow into a prosperous community. With that said, I would also like to share with you my feelings on ordinance B-12-58. My ask is that you carefully consider the impact that this ordinance will have on your city, my company, and my employees who are residents of your city. This ordinance will give the city permission to enter into a contract with NetStandard Incorporated for the city's ongoing support of IT services. While I am certain NetStandard is a reputable corporation, I also understand our offices are in Kansas City, Kansas. My concern is the movement of jobs to Kansas and away from the locally owned small Missouri businesses. If the city's decision is to move away from technology solutions, my hope would be that on the, that she would choose one of the many reputable IT companies from the Missouri side. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Do our citizens wish to address the board?
Chuck Johnston, 611 Cross Creek. I was contacted Friday evening by one of our former mayors and was told something that was very disturbing to me. Apparently, it was a fairly large business looking to relocate to the Kansas City area. They called, tried to get hold of the mayor, tried to get hold of the city administrator. Calls weren't being returned. They finally got hold of the former mayor. He made calls of leave to the mayor and to the city administrator. They finally returned the calls of the business that was looking. They were referred to our economic development consultant, who told them that he wasn't that familiar with Green Valley. It was a new project to him and he couldn't help them. This guy we've had on for a year now, almost a year, we paid him $40,000, close to $40,000. We haven't seen one report from him. When he first came on board, he said we'd have a meeting with the Economic Development Committee. I was a member of back then. Within a month, we finally had a meeting with him about two months ago, which he got down and asked everybody what their future perspective of the Green Valley, what it was. I did, I think we just wasted our money on him from what I've seen. He says he has things, fires on the irons, but because their confidentiality, can't disclose them. I don't know what we're paying for him, particularly if the business will contact him. He just blows them off. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
What company was it?
I didn't get details on that.
Mr. Johnston, I'd be happy to meet with you actually, meeting tonight, although I won't be tonight. We'll be at a meeting, but probably tomorrow because this is the first I'm hearing of any of this.
They calling you tonight? Mike?
Did anybody call you?
Yeah, they called me.
Anyone else wish to address the board? See none, move on to the city agenda.
I believe that we accept the city agenda.
Do I have a second to attempt the city agenda?
Second.
Any discussion on the city agenda? See none, non-care, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. See no previous business or new business, move on to ordinances.
Bill B-12-56, first reading, and ordinance approving the 2013 fiscal year budget, City of Green Valley, Missouri, first reading, Bill B-12-56, excuse me, 56.
I would like to accept Bill B-12-56 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by Todd.
Okay, motion Alderman West to accept Bill B-12-56 for its first reading, bring it back by Todd for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Todd. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'm here. I have just a few points of clarification. Elected salaries went up $11,848.50 from the previous printout to this printout.
Right, that was when Dale had pointed out, we've forgotten the extra means. We just had the standard means in. There's no extra in there. So we added in the extra for additional needs that you may be having to bring it up closer to what it is currently.
Also, under legal, the salaries went up $18,750.
Yeah, that's correct. That was, we talked about also about that at a previous budget meeting. I talked about looking at additional legal services, talked about utilizing Mr. Cook for more contractual needs that we have. And.
Okay, under that same.
No, that records separately. There's a separate line here for courts. That was a comment that Alderman Arnold had about court, city prosecutors no longer listed under court. It got moved under legal to show what all of the legal costs are. And so, but that's separate. That's a separate line from there, I think is what you're looking at.
And on that topic, I think he can, I know it's all legal, but it is specifically involved in court. I would recommend that they move back over into court as opposed to be an illegal.
We can do that and then put an asterisk in the comment section. And that way we don't have to also look at court.
Also, the self inexpensive $30,000.
Right. Purely planning, looking ahead, trying to provide.
Is that an new line item?
Uh, yeah, it would be. If you don't use it, it stays within the fund balance. If you need it, it's there. You can take it out and go ahead and add it to your fund reserve now. And just if you have any adjustments and settlements, costs that are associated, you'll still have to take it from your fund reserve. So whether you have a budget in or whether it's in your fund reserve, either way, that's where it's going to come from. So just try to list it in there so that you have a good picture of what potential legal expenses could be.
And then under police salaries, it went up $60,831.
That's the traffic officer and the adjustment here.
Traffic fines, $50,000 of increased revenues.
That was because there's, that position is supposed to offset, it's supposed to.
And how many, how many citations does that represent?
Well, so far this year, I got a printout and it states that we've had 3,115 so far this year.
Do you want to see this?
I have some.
I have some.
Which one are you looking at? I just don't, I didn't bring any numbers with me tonight. Then when I handed out the pros and cons and all that, it should have been in there, that information. I just don't have it on me right now. The numbers, ticket numbers? You know, I was thinking, Alderman West, when I did it, we were doing an average of 15 tickets a day, I think, from the traffic unit five days a week. And then I based the number based on the lowest fine possible. I think in the end, you're looking at a year end of probably $130,000, $135,000, something like that. I can't remember exactly.
But we didn't state that in the budget. We basically showed it, revenue's in, expense out. We also discussed that doing a six-month report to show the status of the position, the status of how it was performing, so that the board would see, you know, is it paying for itself, is it not paying for itself, is it, is it being effective, is it reducing the speed issues that we've had, is it increasing the safety in the areas that we're concerned about, and be able to provide you a picture of performance of that additional position. Because when, when the board talked about this last, you stated that you wanted to put this in only as a measure for all of those purposes, but you wanted to make sure that it continued to function in those directions. And if it didn't, you wanted the opportunity through attrition to be able to pull, instead of growing jobs, as Alderman Arnold referenced, instead of growing numbers of positions, that way you could then bring it back through attrition and bring it back to what it is that we have now.
Also, under victim rights, you had $12,000 increased revenue.
That again is a reference line item that we missed. And I believe it was Alderman Arnold who brought that up.
And under the community center, it looks, it appears that that $16,000 part-time position is still there. Front desk position, all we discussed that is the left.
Yeah, it's seasonal positions. And I thought we renamed that.
We did. Those were changed. I believe that's a long time ago.
Yeah, I'll check that. But I know that it's been adjusted. Just need to check on that. See, because it appears to be still there. So according to this synopsis that was sent out, it looks like that we still have total fund balance of $184,492, taking revenue to the left. That we have that much reserve, I guess, or whatever you want to call it, fund balances is what we can have.
Which fund would you be making?
You know, I'm looking at total evolved.
That would be about.
Correct. $184,492.
We don't normally know what to get, but it would be pretty close.
And then how, what is the total in the reserve funds? Do you have, you know, that?
The general fund is right around $2 million. And of that, we have to reserve about $750 for covering our expenditures under our reserve policy. There's about $10,000 in the traffic transportation fund, and the park fund, I'm thinking is about $60,000. I'll have to double check on those.
16 or 60?
60. It looks higher than that, but 230,000 of their balance is bond reserve for the COP funds. So all the questions I have.
I've got one. I've talked with Alexis and I've been talking to some of the other Alderman's about, in fact, I think we should do a little more for our employees and would like to see another 1%. Costly added to the 1% that we are currently having in the budget. Other than having us go through the budget and try to figure that out, I think staff is more than adequate to be able to look through there and find what we're needing and make that occur. So I would like to make a motion to amend the budget to allow for an additional 1% cost looking toward the employees and have staff act on that appropriately.
And with those conversations, I will tell you that Alderman Arnold told me that that was the direction that he had shared with some of you. And in looking at that, there are some, there is one expensive item that has been put into the budget on an as-needed basis, and that's the communication server for the phone system. Should the phone system, because it is past end of life, should it die on the year 2013, those funds were put there in order to make that payment, to be able to purchase a new phone system. And what my suggestion would be is to go ahead and remove the allocation from each of those funds that will allow you dollars to pour the extra 1% in salary for employees. And then just know that if your phone system does go out in the year 2013, you would have to make that purchase from the fund balance.
Actually, what Alderman Hedley talked about before was taking it out. Alexis is addressing, do away with the phone, the phone issue, then come back if we have to take it out. And I think that's the simplest easiest way to go, other than going through all the other numbers. I agree. The phone issue, then come back if we have to take it out, and I think that's the simplest, easiest way to go, other than going through all the other numbers, I agree.
So if that's acceptable to everyone, we'll, we'll take that.
They just need direction for us to do that, and then we can bend it, okay?
Yeah.
Is everyone all right with that? Do we actually have to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't think...
You don't need a motion to, in the end, the ordinance, you just need to direct staff after your first reading to...
So if everyone's all right with that, will direct staff do that? Anything else? Anyone else have anything for, for this? Same done, all therapists say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, mayor, first reading. Next item is Bill B twelve dash fifty-seven, first reading. An ordinance amending chapter seven hundred, water section seven hundred point zero five zero, billing periods in section seven zero five one zero eight zero, City of Green Valley, municipal code, first reading, Bill B twelve dash fifty-seven.
I move that we accept Bill B twelve dash fifty-seven for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I motion Auburn West to approve Bill B twelve dash fifty-seven for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I'm Shaker.
He's the one that's one Nancy's, I'm looking at seven.
Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, thank Kathy for being two months ahead of schedule. Thank you so much. When I, when I was walking around knocking on doors, this is the one thing that I heard from voters more than anything. They wanted to be able to pick and choose their water bill, and I remember when we spent the money for the system, your, your new accounting system, or wherever you want to call it, uh, and you brought information that you could do this. I know there's going to be a lot of people in City of Green Valley, happy, that they're going to be able to pick and choose how they do their water bill. That was the number one topic that I heard, that I would like to be able to have my water bill monthly and not appropriated. So thank you for being two months ahead of schedule, because I know you told me January when we talked about this, appreciate it.
And just to bring up highlights, even though it is outlined in the ordinance, um, language, that amends chapter seven hundred, I just want to highlight that the, uh, averaging, um, monthly usages occurred during December, January, and February. And, um, consumers will have until March first to make that selection. If they do not make that selection, yeah.
Yeah, do it before March first, then it takes the people first.
And, um, if they don't do it by then, then they will, uh, stick with the monthly, uh...
The lower average or not average?
I'm assuming there's going to be a, a letter with the water bill.
Correct. And we'll send out the form for the people to send back and sign up whichever way they want to go. And if they don't respond in any way, we'll assume they want lower average.
That's about all you can do, just assume, yeah.
Can you put something on the website, similar language, just?
Yeah, I, I think the plan is to put it within, uh, with all the waters as well.
And we'll mail, uh, form out with every water bill that goes out in January, so they're, got time to think about it and have it back in time, call, get any questions they have answered, go from there, it doesn't go half the time.
I just think over-communication in this case is better than...
I'm scared of the, the, I know it's probably going to cause some formula makers for you to calculate.
Go back and stop or edit it, so, I mean, Dale just had to listen to what he was saying. Oh, yeah, but the challenge would be people that want, get it for money, and then they want to change that. If someone calls. Exactly, yeah.
Any additional discussion? Same done, all therapists say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, first mayor. Bill B twelve dash fifty-eight. It is first reading, it's on for first and second tonight. Just first reading?
Yes.
It is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Net Standard for information, technology support, and management services. First reading, Bill B twelve dash fifty-eight.
Mayor, I immediately accept Bill twelve dash fifty-eight for its first reading, bring it back for title only, for second reading by title only.
I motion Auburn Headley to accept Bill B twelve dash fifty-eight for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Auburn, Shaker. Any discussion?
Yes, I know that this has been a pretty hot topic of conversation today, and, um, I did want to explain to the board the process that was followed. And that was in, uh, February of this year, we put out a request for proposals and utilized the city's total ordinances and our purchasing policies in order to solicit proposals for these services. Um, with that, we received six responses, and, um, they came from all over the city, the regional area, uh, including Kansas City, Kansas, Blue Springs, Overland Park, Lee's Summit, Raytown, and a company that's actually based out of Nevada, or the state of Nevada. And, um, with that, um, a committee was formed, and, uh, there was three other individuals on that committee along with myself, representatives, uh, from, uh, our I T department, our engineer, and our police department. And, and evaluation forms followed that had a set of points criteria. Based upon that points criteria, we took the top three firms and brought them in for, uh, presentations and an interview. And then based upon the responses, where we drilled down a little bit more, uh, into the, uh, company's experience and expertise, uh, the type of resources they would have, their approach to the city, and the cost as well. And based upon that, the committee then did another evaluation score sheet, and based upon that score sheet, uh, the award and the recommendation was made to Net Standard to come to the board this evening. Um, since that time, there's been quite a bit of negotiations and talks that have gone back and forth between Net Standard and the city in order to work out a contract that's amenable to both organizations, and that's what you have in front of you this evening. Uh, I will tell you that it's very difficult to look at the two firms apples to apples, because, um, under Net Standard, they will be providing our antivirus and spam software services, or before, all of those services were broken out from our I T services. In addition, um, so the only thing that I, I did was, uh, tried to do a, um, annual cost of what was spent with technology services, uh, solutions, and, um, the average amount within this range is anywhere from, um, probably nineteen to twenty-three thousand dollars. The estimated cost for this service is, um, it's fifteen seventy-three a month, and, um, is all-inclusive. In addition, through Net Standard, they're able to, uh, they are also including in their monthly rate, uh, fifteen quarterly calls at, that are included in that cost. So any type of service that we need, they're, they will make that call here. Uh, the project manager that is with Net Standard that, um, will be representing and serving the City of Green Valley, uh, the one thing that we want to make sure is that that individual did live nearby, uh, he does, I don't know their exact address, I just required a fifteen-minute call back. And, uh, they said that that would absolutely be no problem. So I don't know if that individual is in Uproh, Green Valley, or Blue Springs, but I know that they are nearby. And, um, I, in going through the process, um, I want to thank Technology Solutions. They've been a great long-term partner with the city for ten years, and, um, when you follow a process like this, sometimes it's difficult to understand. However, um, when you follow it and you do a point system and you go through those scenarios, uh, that's one of the most fair ways that we can do it. And I know that sometimes, uh, individuals or other organizations may not find that palatable, but it's the most fair way that I've learned to do it. And, uh, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Was there some reason that you put it out for bid this year?
Yeah, the contract is actually up, and so we've been on a month-to-a-month with Technology Solutions, so it was time to go for bid.
Any discussions, questions? Any more submitted? Same done, all therapists say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, first mayor. Bill B twelve dash fifty-nine, first reading, it's on two readings tonight. It is an ordinance approving the issuance of tax increment revenue bonds, Green Valley Marketplace Redevelopment Project Number Two, Series two thousand twelve, by the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the bonds. First reading, Bill B twelve dash fifty-nine.
I move that we accept Bill B twelve dash fifty-nine for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I motion from Auburn West to approve Bill B twelve dash fifty-nine for its first reading and bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Auburn, Scully. Any discussion? Same done, all therapists say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, first mayor, second reading, Bill B twelve dash fifty-nine, it will be ordinance two two five four. It is an ordinance approving the issuance of tax increment revenue bonds, Green Valley Marketplace Redevelopment Project Number Two, Series two thousand twelve, by the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the bonds. Second reading, ordinance two two five four.
I move that we accept the Bill B twelve dash fifty-nine for its second reading, making it ordinance number twenty-two fifty-four.
I motion Auburn West to approve Bill B twelve dash fifty-nine for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty-two fifty-four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Auburn, Scully. Any discussion? Same done, all therapists please say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Arnold?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
You now, as mayor. Bill B twelve dash sixty, first reading, it's on for two readings tonight. It is an ordinance of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into the First Amendment of the Cooperative Agreement with the Green Valley Marketplace Community Improvement District and S G Property Management, L L C, for funding and financing of Community Improvement District, C I D, improvements. First reading, Bill B twelve dash sixty.
I move that we accept Bill B twelve dash sixty for its first reading, bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I motion Auburn West to approve the Bill B twelve dash sixty for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Auburn, Scully. Any discussion?
Yes, I wanted to explain to the board this evening why this agreement's coming up in front of you, and I've asked Joe Lawler, our economic and ultimate attorney, please come forward and briefly explain, um, how this and why this issue's in front of you this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Uh, just, uh, wanted to go through a couple of quick bullet points, uh, with you with respect to the Cooperative Agreement. Uh, as it states in the, uh, recitals to the amendment, uh, uh, in, in the amendment itself and in the ordinance, uh, there have been some recent I R S decisions that have called into question the public nature of, uh, C I, of special district improvements. These are, uh, we've talked about these in the past before, uh, and, uh, just, uh, to, uh, to ensure the, uh, the tax exempt status of these bonds, uh, our bond council has recommended that we limit, uh, the payments by the C I D to nine and a half percent, uh, or less of the net debt service that, that's due, uh, when the bond's been issued. Uh, this does include payments for administrative and operation, uh, costs of the district. As a result of this, uh, this change in, in how the I R S is treating, uh, these revenues, it became necessary to change the priority of the distribution of C I D funds, uh, C I D revenues, uh, which, uh, were covered in the, uh, uh, Cooperative Agreement at the time that we approved it a couple of years ago, uh, and as a result, uh, some changes were needed. The biggest change that you'll see is actually to, uh, section three point six, uh, which we call, uh, commonly the waterfall provision. It talks about how C I D revenues are spent once they've been, uh, uh, just, uh, collected, uh, from Department of Revenue. And this amendment basically will, will tie, uh, the distribution of, of C I D revenues to what the bond documents say. And I took the language, uh, it mimics almost identically the T I F contract language, does it the same way. We, we try to, to, to get those set up, uh, so that they, they will flow into that, that trust indenture for, uh, for the T I F. This change, however, creates a ripple effect, it touches upon a couple of other sections. Uh, so, uh, we also had to, uh, to make a change to allow, uh, the, uh, previously in the, in the Cooperative Agreement, the city was able to take out administration and operating costs, uh, right out of the C I D revenues when they came in from the Department of Revenue. That's no longer going to work once the bonds are, are up and running because of this change that we had to make. So in order to maximize the proceeds on, on the bonds, the developer has agreed to become responsible for the administration and operating costs if there aren't enough C I D revenues to pay both the debt service and those costs. And that change you'll find in section, uh, three point three B. And then, uh, three point three C is a, and a, a change to Cooperative Agreement that sets up a procedure for the city to notify the developer when, when this occurs, basically an invoicing provision. Uh, under the trust indenture, the city has the option to, uh, reimburse the developer for reimbursable project costs not paid to the developer. Uh, if there are any revenues, C I D revenues left, uh, we can make a transfer to the redemption account, uh, or we can contribute up to ten thousand dollars per year. That's a cap that's being put in by the trust indenture to, uh, operating and, uh, administrative costs, provided that they don't go over that nine and a half percent limit that the I R S is imposing, uh, in that case, so. We, uh, we did, as a part of this process, agree to increase, uh, the, the cap on administration and operating expenses in years that the T I F bonds are no longer in effect, so once we pay the T I F bonds down, we will allow the developer to apply as much as twenty thousand dollars per year to administration and operating costs. The idea being that, at that time, at the end of, once we've gotten everything paid off, he's probably going to have money that he's paid out through the process that he'll need to get paid back for, and that cap at ten thousand dollars, we're probably not allowing to get there, uh, with respect to that. And then finally, section three point two, uh, reduces, uh, the annual requirement for an independent audit. Uh, right now, uh, the way that the Cooperative Agreement was set up, the, uh, the developer could, could incur operating costs, and, uh, to some extent, those, those were coming, those, at, as the Cooperative Agreement sits today, those, those costs were paid prior to debt service. And so we put an independent audit requirement in there to make sure that, that the developer wasn't, you know, spending money on, on things that was taking away from being able to pay the debt service down. Now, with the change of the trust indenture, that money is flowing straight to pay debt service first, we don't really have a need. That requirement stays in place once that, uh, the T I F bonds are paid off, so that protection stays in place, uh, after the fact. But we, uh, we removed it here, and it also, uh, uh, amounts to a cost savings, uh, in those years that the, uh, the T I F is, uh, is, the T I F bonds are outstanding, and then that means we can pay more, uh, debt service in those years, get it paid down faster. Uh, that is the summary, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
The other part of this too is that, uh, the reason that you have this in front of you this evening for a double read is the, uh, Community Improvement District is actually going to have a meeting tomorrow, and they'll be considering this as well, and, uh, need to have the board look at it as well as the C I D, so.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Same done, all therapists please say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, first, second reading, Bill B twelve dash sixty. It will be ordinance two two five five, it, it is an ordinance of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into the First Amendment of the Cooperative Agreement with the Green Valley Marketplace Community Improvement District and S G Property Management, L L C, for funding and financing of Community Improvement District, C I D, improvements. Second reading, ordinance two two five five.
I move that we accept Bill B twelve dash sixty for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty-two fifty-five.
I motion Auburn West to approve Bill B twelve dash sixty for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty-two fifty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Auburn, Scully. Any discussion? Same done, all therapists say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
West?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
You now, as mayor. Resolution R twelve dash thirty-six. A resolution by the Board of Alderman of the City of Green Valley, appointing the city administrator as the City of Green Valley representative on the Community Improvement District, C I D, board. On the Community Improvement District, C I D Board.
I move that we accept Resolution B twelve dash three-six.
Now, motion Alderman Scully to approve Resolution R twelve dash thirty-six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Mine says B.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's hope we have.
Just hurry.
Mayor, who, who are the members on this board?
They were listed there.
Yeah, they're, the majority are the ordinance, the Community Improvement District, I'm the city representative. And I'm going to have to recall now, Paul, you're the.
Executive Director, Nina Evans is the secretary, and.
Kathy's the treasurer, right?
Kathy's the treasurer.
Kathy Larino.
Okay, there were several members, look like, that are renewing this year, is that correct? You were, you were director, your term expired then on September the twenty-sixth of this year? Looking at the.
For the C I D?
Uh huh.
They actually renewed.
It looks like three terms actually expired on September twenty-sixth.
Yeah, and the C I D, all this board does is approve my appointment in the C I D, I believe, is that correct? C I D approves the, the other officers. And those were done in Jan, I think.
So then that's, is that for your term, is that, is that for your?
Any questions or discussion? Say none, all therapists please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero mayor, and that's all the ordinances and regulations.
Next item is city attorney's ports.
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
Next item is city administrators and staff ports.
The only thing that I have this evening is Missouri Municipal League, their next meeting is coming up on Thursday, October twenty-fifth. It's going to be held at the Elm's Hotel in Excelsior Springs. If you would like to attend that, please let Jamie Ringsmire or Cleo Holland know that you will be attending, so that we can RSVP for, RSVP for you. And that is due by this Thursday. So if we do not hear from you, we won't be allowed to attend. And that's all I have, thank you.
Any other staff reports? All right, more of Alderman reports and comments, Alderman Arnold?
Nothing, Mr. Speaker, do you have a question for your afternoon?
Alderman West?
Nothing, ma'am.
Alderman Headley?
Nothing, Mr. Speaker.
Alderman Scully?
Yeah, it means I'm getting old, you know, I, I know when Jerry Logan was born in the neighborhood. They don't seem that long ago. I'm glad he's there, he's a good kid. That's all.
All right, Alderman Totten?
Well, I'd like to say thank you to everybody, both with the city and in my wonderful neighborhood, for all the help they gave me, with Mr. Totten being in the hospital. And the concern that he had. And I really appreciated everything. I thank you very much.
And he's back.
Yep.
Alderman Schaefer?
I came down to City Hall the other day to talk to Lex about some stuff, and Ryan took me for a ride up to the Public Works Building. Showed me some concrete that the city, let's see what I'm looking for here, the.
Maintenance.
What's that?
The maintenance workers?
The maintenance workers had done in-house, it looked extremely good. I mean, I just, I do some poor concrete, and it looked like professional guys had done it, they've done a great job. So another example of what we've done in-house, saved, saved a lot of money. So let the guys know, I think they've done a really good job.
Next item is a marriage report. I just want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for throwing a great event, taste the world. My daughter will only stop being scared of six-foot-tall armadillos and cowboy hats now, we're being in shape. She keeps saying, Andy Armadillo, Texas Roadhouse, I'm like, yep, that's his house. So, you know, we always, we always enjoy that event, so I thank everyone at the Chamber who helped to put that together, it's a massive event. That's all I have for marriage report. I believe we do have a meeting for the executive session for individually identifiable personnel records, personnel records, performance ratings, or records obtained to employees or applicants for appointments. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn, we'll actually adjourn to the downstairs conference room, correct?
Thank you, that I do.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn the executive session?
Still move.
Motion Alderman Arnold, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Totten, any discussion? All as a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Alderman Schaefer? Alderman Totten? Alderman Scully?
Yes.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman West?
Yes.
Alderman Arnold?
Yes.
All right, we'll turn downstairs.